Saint Charles County Council. To begin with, we will have the Fledge of Allegiance by Jerry Doherty, but before that, we'll have the invocation led by Dan Wagner from Church in the Rock. Please stand.
Father God, we come before you, your throne of grace, with confidence so that we may receive mercy and find grace to help us in our time of need. We come before you with thanksgiving for favor and for the rain across our region. Your word says in Psalm 67, verse five and six, "May all the peoples praise you, O God, then the land will yield its harvest, and God, our God, will bless us." We ask, Father, that your blessings will bring favor to tonight's agenda and meeting. We thank you, Father, that you grant wisdom, understanding, and discernment of the bills, the amendments, the public comments of tonight's agenda. And, Father, we pray your blessings on all of those in attendance, that their efforts and concerns will be addressed in a reasonable and beneficial way. We thank you for our county government and its role in providing all Saint Charles Countyans opportunities to voice their concerns and in conducting the administration of Saint Charles County business in an orderly and profitable manner. Finally, Father, thank you that all of us have hope and a future. Your plans are to prosper us and not to harm us if we but call on you, and that's what we've just done. Proverbs 16:3 says that if we commit whatever we do to God, our plans will succeed. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every injustice for all.
Would you please call the roll? Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Wynn.
Hello, my fellow people.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Jerry Doherty.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
First item on the agenda is public comments. You're welcome to speak on any topic, on the agenda or not, for up to three minutes. We ask that you keep your comments civil, not attack any one person or office in particular. Please fill out a speaker's card either before you speak or after. Limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone to speak on any topic this evening?
Good evening, esteemed members of the County Council. My name is A.C. Deanhoff, county resident, and I'm here tonight to encourage all county residents to vote for Proposition R. Proposition R, as you know, is the road board fund tax, the mechanism that's a half-cent sales tax for road improvement projects. This is a great tax. It makes sense. It's run great by Mr. Graffschuh and by the county executive. It's run in a fair and transparent way. I've been asking a lot of questions over the last couple of years and been getting some answers, and you have a lot to learn, and hopefully Steve and John will teach me a little bit more along the way so I can be an expert at that issue. But this Proposition R links our communities together. It links all of our villages and all of our municipalities countywide. It provides strengthening roads for our rural communities in the unincorporated Saint Charles County. And this tax, it's well put together, it's well thought out. It's the envy of the country. A lot of other areas and jurisdictions wish that they could come to an intergovernmental compact and agree to such a tax that makes sense. This way of funding, it provides automatic matching funds when the state comes and says we want a complete page. We had the money already available. If the municipalities or the county alone would want to do this, it'd be a hard thing to sell. It provides economic development, creating jobs and opportunities in the communities along the corridors that this fund improves, and it improves the thoroughfares and mitigates traffic congestion in some of our urban suburban communities across the county. Basically, to sum it up, this tax makes so much sense. It's with a no-tax increase. It's a half-cent sales tax for 10 years, and I would encourage the county council and all my fellow citizens across the county to vote yes. This is a win-win situation. It's a win-win for communities, linking communities together and making a strong county for economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deanhoff. Is there anyone else to speak on Proposition R? Is there anyone to speak on any other topic? If not, that...
I'll try to make my comments brief. At the last meeting or the meeting before, the elected county election authority director came before you, and he scolded you in a work session, saying that the county council has no right to have any authority over his building. Well, that building, in my opinion, is underutilized. That building has a lot of open spaces, and although I can't speak for Mr. Krismer's actions directly, but I'd like to apologize on behalf of the employees of that agency. They feel that they're being wrongly criticized for a lot of misdeeds on behalf of the department head, who's an elected official, and so I have to say I apologize to this county council for his actions. That building has a lot of open areas. It has one floor and two floors in some of the building. I'd say over half the building, the second floor is open air, and for you to create a mezzanine is not going to take any space away from the election authority, its procedures, or its duties. Before you tonight is a contract in the amount of, I believe, $458,000. It has a lot of detailed explanations here that I unfortunately have not gone through, but I would assume that the Director of Finance wouldn't recommend somebody that isn't going to be cognizant of taxpayer dollars. And for an elected official that should be proud of that building and proud that the county gave him such a nice building, he should be accepting of what the county has given him and live within the means. By placing this secondary deck data backup recovery center at the county election authority will not intrude or impede any of the operations of the election authority, and again, please don't let another elected official try to sway you or trump this county council's responsibilities and duties. And I would move ahead with the project, find what the best location is for the secondary backup data recovery center. If it's going to be in the open air of the election authority, it's not going to cause anybody any foul or harm, and I ask that you do what's right in behalf of community and making this county stronger. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak this evening? Hearing none, that closes public comment. Next on the agenda is the oral report from the county executive.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to yield my time to Gil Copley. I think he has a presentation.
Elman. Thank you, County Council. I'm here tonight to give you a brief overview of the Department of Community Health and the Environment. It is one of the county's departments, and I want to try to let you know a little bit of what we do. We have three divisions in the department. The Division of Environmental Health and Protection, the Division of Public Health, and the Division of Humane Services. We also have our Emergency Preparedness Program for public health preparedness, which reports directly to me rather than being part of any of the divisions. Our mission, which we created over a decade ago, is that we are committed to the protection and enhancement of the quality of life for all members of our community in Saint Charles through good health that comes from education, disease prevention, and from promoting and upholding good health care and environmental standards and practices. In order to accomplish that mission statement, we periodically assess the community's health status, looking at various statistics and sources of information. We develop policies, procedures, and programs to meet those needs that we assess. We implement those policies and procedures to try to accomplish what we have determined is important, and we periodically measure the outcomes of what we're doing, and then we go through the whole thing again in a cyclical fashion, and so it's a never-ending process. The Department of Community Health and the Environment has a total staff of 56 full-time positions. We operate at four locations to deliver services to the public. Our 2011 revenues were $2.3 million plus. Fees accounted for $1.4 million of the revenue, and grants for $866,000. For 2010, 2011, and 2012, based on a national study of all counties in the United States using a standardized set of measurements, Saint Charles County has been the number-one Missouri county in health outcomes for those years. That includes things like healthy lifestyles, what disease levels we're seeing, what overall community health is, and a number of other factors. For those three years, we've been the number-two Missouri county in health factors. That includes things like health-related behaviors, tobacco use, so forth, access to medical care, educational attainment, and air quality. We might be number one if it were not that we're in an ozone non-attainment area in this metropolitan area. The Division of Public Health is the first of our divisions. It includes the Immunization Program, the Women, Infants, and Children Program, WIC, the STD Prevention and Treatment Program, the Communicable Disease and Epidemiology Program, vital records availability, and health education. That's a photo of our immunization clinic on Boonslick. Our services in immunization are child and youth immunizations. We have a new adult immunization program that's now been going for several years, which has been extremely successful. We are planning to launch a travel vaccination program before the end of this year. In 2011, we administered more than 10,000 immunizations to children and adults. We also have a shingles vaccination program for adults 60 and older, which has been very popular with our senior population in Saint Charles County. Our WIC program is located on Boonslick. It includes supplemental nutrition package vouchers for children less than age five and pregnant or nursing mothers. The visit of each WIC client includes extensive nutrition education and nutrition evaluation. The results of all this work is healthier pregnancies, healthier infants, and healthier children. We have an ongoing caseload at any given time of 2,000-plus WIC clients. The STD clinic also located on Boonslick. At that clinic, we do confidential STD testing. We do STD treatment and counseling when we have positive STD results. We provide an array of age-appropriate educational presentations in cooperation with participating schools in Saint Charles County, and we present adult prevention education in a number of different venues. For example, Lindenwood, the Community College, places where we can reach a large population of individuals that might benefit by this education. Epidemiology and communicable disease follow-up is a cornerstone of public health nationwide and historically. It involves the public, healthcare providers. It involves surveillance of what's going on health-wise in the community with disease, and it includes epidemiology when we need to look more closely at a disease pattern or an outbreak. In 2011, we received 2,284 communicable disease reports. These are reports mandated by state laws and regulation. We conducted follow-up on 1,090 of those reports. The others were, say, other counties surrounding us, residents of those counties, and we performed a detailed investigation on 750 of those cases. We provided directly observed therapy, usually in the home, to five patients with diagnosed TB disease in 2011. The directly observed therapy, or DOT, ensures that they're taking the medication and will not become infectious to other people. It also has been found to help prevent the development of multidrug-resistant tuberculosis, which is much more difficult to treat, more dangerous, and often requires extensive hospitalization. We participate in local, regional, state, and national disease outbreak investigations. You read about them in the newspaper and see them in the media, and we often are participating in recalls and other investigations that you read about. One of our most important programs, because it's extremely popular with our citizens and those in surrounding counties, is providing vital records, birth and death certificates. We provide records access to all Missouri birth records since 1920 and death records since 1980. We issued more than 20,000 certified copies of birth and death records in 2011. In 2012, we launched a new online application for records using Vital Check at no cost to the county. All fees for the records come directly to the county. The people that use that service do have to pay a convenience fee to the company to use that online option. Community outreach and education is extremely important to the Division of Public Health. In 2011, the department made, Division made nearly 750 presentations to a total of 21,000 participants. We continued a cooperative educational program for students in several school districts dealing with physical activity and proper nutrition and diet. We made presentations to businesses and service organizations during the year throughout Saint Charles County. Some of the key accomplishments of the Division of Public Health in 2011 include revenues of $987,000 plus, vital records pulled in $377,000, WIC nearly $300,000, and grants more than $200,000. We provided service to more than 85,000 customers through the Division of Public Health, and the total staff of that division is 21 full-time positions. Our Division of Environmental Public Health and Protection is responsible for environmental public health protection, for recycling, for solid waste code enforcement, for vector or mosquito control, for environmental protection, and for environmental education and outreach. In 2011, we conducted almost 4,900 inspections of regulated facilities, including permanent, mobile, and temporary food establishments, daycare centers, swimming pools, fitness centers, and tanning salons, body art businesses, and lodging facilities, which generated over $300,000 in revenue, but more importantly, provided good public health preventive protection to our population. We also developed a QR tag for food establishments, stickers in 2011, and if somebody has a smartphone, they can scan the sticker right there at the restaurant. You've all probably seen our stickers at various restaurants, and it will connect their smartphone to the website, and they can look at inspection results. This is what the sticker looks like. We have two recycling centers, One Recycle Works Central near Kisker Road and Central School Road, and the other Recycle Works West in Wentzville on East Pittman Road. We collect a wide array of recyclable materials, and we collect household hazardous waste at Recycle Works Central seasonally from late spring until early fall. In 2011, we collected 2 million pounds of material, and since the beginning of the recycling program in Saint Charles County in the mid-1990s, we've collected 34 million pounds of recyclable materials. This is a photograph of the entrance to the Recycle Works West facility in Wentzville. We're co-located with the Highway Department. Vector mosquito control is something we haven't heard much about this year, but I know from getting calls from you in previous years that it's something that is dear to the heart of those being bitten by mosquitoes. We larvicide during the day to prevent development of adult mosquitoes in standing water when we identify problematic areas. We do night spraying to kill adult mosquitoes that do develop, based on where we are receiving complaints from our citizens that there's a problem. We provide mosquito control services and have for several years to smaller municipalities under annual contracts, intergovernmental agreements. We conduct annual public information campaigns every year in the spring to tell people what they can do to help control the number of mosquitoes in their neighborhoods, and we have a lot of people that do do that. Our solid waste code enforcement program involves inspecting solid waste processing facilities, inspecting landfills, inspecting commercial composting operations, and inspecting waste haulers, both trucks and containers. Environmental protection is another area we work in. We work on soil and water protection, almost always in conjunction with other agencies and organizations. We do roadside dumping cleanup, one where is refuse and items dumped by the side of county roads, and we've done that a number of years. We participate in the annual clean stream cleanup program. We also monitor the well monitoring results from the Weldon Springs site on a quarterly basis when we receive those results, and we also sit as participants on a commission on environmental quality and provide some clerical support to that commission in the form of preparing agendas and typing up the minutes of the meetings. The commission itself takes the minutes. Environmental education and outreach has been going on in Saint Charles County for many, many years. Before I got here, it was in place, and we have continued that. In 2011, we presented more than 50 educational programs to area schools and groups. We presented regular basic food safety classes to food establishment employees and advanced food safety classes to managers of food establishments. These are required in the county food code, so this gives them a means to, we provide them based on our cost, and this gives them a way to get these classes that are required by ordinance. We also did the same thing with certified pool-operated classes, again, required by the aquatics code that the operators of pools be certified. This gives them a way to get that certification. In summary, the Division of Environmental Health and Protection had 2011 revenues of more than $485,000. We inspected nearly 2,000 establishments to ensure public health and safety. We collected more than 2 million pounds of recycled material, and we do this with a total of 12 full-time positions. We also had some assistance, more than 900 hours through the work program through the courts at our recycling centers. We get young people to come out and work with us and help, and that is a substantial help to us. Our last division is the Division of Humane Services. It operates the pet adoption center. It enforces the county's animal control ordinance. It conducts special programs in the community, and it does pet health and safety education and outreach programs to the community. The Pet Adoption Center was built in 1999, and this is a photograph of it. The Division offices and programs are located in that facility at 4850 Mid Rivers Mall Drive. It houses up to 300 dogs and cats. We can double up if the animals are smaller, if we have to, but usually the population is somewhere between 250 and 300 animals at any given time. It's centrally located for the majority of residents of the county. It opened at its current location, as I mentioned, in 1999. The Animal Control Code is enforced by the Division of Humane Services. We respond to and investigate public complaints and reports of strays, cruelty, or neglect to animals, and we responded to 5,800 complaints in 2011. We investigated dog bites, both for injury and also to do a rabies investigation to see if there's any possibility that the person who was bitten is at risk of rabies. We conduct dangerous animal hearings, as per the county's Animal Control Code, and we oversee the countywide rabies vaccination program and receive the fees for those licenses that are issued, the tags for the dogs under the licensing program. We have some special programs. Our animal adoption program is, again, a cornerstone of animal control in our facility here in Saint Charles County. We adopted 2,300 animals out in 2011. All those animals were spayed or neutered, microchipped, and rabies vaccinated. The percent of animals out of the total we take in that adopted is higher than anywhere else in this region and higher than the national rate for animal control agencies. Microshipping services are made available to the public at cost, so this results in us returning a lot of pets to families because we're able to identify where that pet came from very quickly. We have a low-cost, paid neuter program. There's a fee associated with that, and we have 5,000 volunteer service hours to the center just in 2011, and we receive thousands of dollars of cash donations, supplies, and materials. All the cash goes through the Finance Department in a special donation fund. We could not operate such a state-of-the-art, well-thought-of facility without the 5,000 volunteer hours that our citizens of this county put in. It's a remarkable response, and we've seen it ever since we opened that facility. We also try to educate the community on animal safety, responsible animal ownership. We give regular tours of the Pet Adoption Center to schools, scout groups, and other groups as requested. We do periodic off-site adoption events to take advantage of groupings of people that might be interested in adopting a pet. We have been using social media newsletters, the county website, and the county video production program to present safety and responsible pet ownership messages as widely as possible. In 2011, the revenues of the Division of Humane Services were more than $515,000. We placed more than 30,000 adopted pets since opening in 1999, so that's a lot of pets in homes. We returned more than 800 lost pets in 2011 to their owners, and again, that performance exceeds the national average, and we have 19 full-time staff that do that, plus the $5,000 hours of volunteer support that I mentioned. Our final program, which reports to the Director's Office, is a Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program. It coordinates response to regional and local health emergencies based on a written plan that is updated continually. We have partnerships with federal, state, local, and private agencies, and ongoing training and improvement, training based on the plan that we have to exercise, to see how it works, and then improve the plan. We also conduct a lot of community education on preparedness for families, what to do to prepare for a disaster. The Ready in Three Program... The Ready in Three program is one of those things that we teach. The medical dispensing in an emergency, this is a picture of the June 28th this year exercise of a drive-through distribution site for antibiotics. Somehow, we managed to pick the hottest day of 2011. The staff did a wonderful job considering the heat, and while we had a lot of challenges and not everything worked like we wished because it was so hot, I believe it still taught us a lot of lessons that we can think about. We build a lot of regional partnerships throughout the state and the metro area, and we have a strong, as I mentioned before, community education program for preparedness. The 2011 revenues for emergency, public health emergency preparedness were nearly $320,000. Planning and preparedness grant accounted for $168,000, and the city's readiness initiative, our CRI, grant for $150,000. Recent preparedness, the recent preparedness exercise partnered with more than 25 regional agencies. The total staff that supports this program on a full-time basis is two. We also receive volunteer support in 2011, approximately 1,000 hours. The future things we would like to do is to enhance the adult immunization program by adding the travel vaccinations. We would like to introduce a reused mercantile shop, which you approved in the solid waste code, which will allow us to show how you could reuse things instead of throwing them away, by taking some of the items we received that are usable and then selling them at a moderate price to individuals that are interested in putting that money back into the county to support the recycling program. We want to improve community outreach and pet owner education through the programs we conduct, and we want to continue growing our emergency response partnerships. We are also in the process of updating the department's website, and we'll have an increased social media presence, we hope, in the future through Twitter and through Facebook and any other opportunity we have. I want to thank you for listening to a long presentation. I tried to make it as succinct as I could, but it's a big department, and we have a lot of people working to protect the public health of Moose County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very interesting. Do you have any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. Yes, sir?
Who's number one in category or two? Who's number one in that one category? You said we were second.
It's one of the counties, I think, in northwest Missouri, Platt County or somebody.
It's a much smaller county. And again, if it wasn't for the ozone, we'd probably be number one.
Just one fast question. Do people have to make an appointment for immunization?
It's best if they do. If they walk in, we will try to accommodate them, but it's much better if they make an appointment, and we make the appointment process painless. And as a matter of fact, we started that a little over a year ago with, with some software that we have, and it's resulted in people making most of their appointments. And when they don't, we can send them an email reminder that they missed the appointment and then reschedule it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your public comments?
Yes, it does, Madam Chairman.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to make a motion to remove the contractor, Rossen Berzini.
I am supporting.
Okay, the IS department under miscellaneous?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? IS department is removed. Is there anything else to be removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
IS department, Mr. Cronin.
I just had a few questions. It's a large contract, and I think a big portion of it is the, putting the emergency data center inside of the election authority building. And I guess my question is, has the county considered alternatives as far as, instead of spending a half a million dollars for this contract, possibly spending a half a million dollars to build a new building specifically designated for the emergency data center on property maybe the county already owns, like the bean field next to Sheriff's Department or the bean field behind the election authorities department?
Let's, let's start over and let us present what is and isn't in this. Before you make any conclusions, go ahead, Jennifer.
I'm going to tell you the radio, the county's, the county's name. He can answer questions directly on that contract, but I think as Chuck had mentioned last meeting, that that's what the purpose of this contract actually is, is for them to help us determine the best location for that data center. This contract is not specifically for the purpose of building a data center in the building on Turner Boulevard. But if Dwayne could answer any questions, and then also Dave Ridgway, our acting IS directors, also here this evening, but I think Dwayne can probably handle most of it.
Right, as Jennifer had mentioned, the first part of this contract, as it goes through its phases, is location determination, what makes the best sense for the county to reduce the risk and estimate construction costs to reinforce a building or to look at a new building potentially even. We started talking to Rossen Berzini over a year ago, and inside the county, through some other directors and other departments, facilities, planning and so forth, we looked at other locations within the county for that as well. The elections building came up only because there was space, but Rossen Berzini will actually help us make that location consideration.
Can I ask you how big that data center is?
That's part of-
I read through all the contracts and haven't said anything about how big it is.
And that, that is part of the information discovery that Rossen Berzini will do. How much power do you need? How much space, not only for today, but even projecting out in the next five years when we talk about advances in technology, to make sure that the data, data center is right-sized, not only for our needs today, but we're not back in front of the council three or four years from now saying we need more space.
I read through all the pages of it, and it looks like a lot of it is stuff to find out if the Turner, the Turner Boulevard building, the seismic and wind ratings of that building. I'd imagine that those were probably in the original plans for that building. It's not that old a building. I mean, it looks like we might be paying for a lot of stuff that's already probably out there. Bob Hoffman probably has the original prints for that building and, and the ratings for it, you know?
That is correct, council member. One of the things that Rossen Berzini will take is that information and analyze it and say, you know what? In that instance, if it meets the uptime center institute and the best practices to say, you know what, this building is size, you know, it's, it's sound enough for our data center, then we don't have to reinforce the interior of the building in case that roof was to collapse on it and so on and so forth. So some of it is, is a lot of information gathering to come back to the county and help us make sense of, of what those best practices are, as well as what the trade-offs and risks are.
But what I read in this is this is strictly looking at that, the biggest chunk of it's looking at that Turner Boulevard building, which already has a leaky roof and is an older building. Wouldn't we be, my, my question is, would it make maybe more sense to take that same $400,000 and ply it towards the design of a new building on ground the county already owns? That's, I just wonder if anybody's looked at that.
For, for the most part, we have not only just a new building. The second part of that contract is a master site planning out the sheriff's office. So if that were to fold in there and the decision-making said that we need it, you know, instead of putting more money into the Turner Boulevard building, as you might be suggesting, you know, to focus that money somewhere else, absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Brazel.
What, what it did, if I remember, the, the size of space you were looking for was 3,500 square feet or something like that, or?
It's about 3,500 that we're currently speculating.
Okay, here's, here's the problem I have with this, and I gotta say this. We own six acres behind the sheriff's department, don't we?
Correct.
Okay. The cost of construction on a new building, what is it, $200 a square foot about?
I have no idea.
That's about, that's about what it is, okay? So you're building high schools and stuff like that for $200 a square foot. We're spending, if we need 3,500 square feet or 4,000 square feet, and we're spending $500,000 to determine whether or not we should build, use that 3,500 square feet and part of the sheriff's department, that seems like a lot of money, a lot of money. And if it's an architect, what, the cost of a construction, an architect is typically 7%, right? 7% of architectural fees.
Correct.
So is this going to be a three and a half million dollar project?
At the end of this, and that's, that's part of the decision-making that help us with the county because there are pre-built, prefabricated data center systems that are out there now. Is that a good fit for the county? Well, that's a newer technology that, when we started talking inside the county with other personnel that we're totally unfamiliar with. And so to bring in some of that expertise to, to help with that. Now, the, the data center itself-
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Jennifer, explain the scope of the contract.
I, I actually don't think I'm probably, it's particularly prepared to do that. I think this has primarily been something that Chuck's been working on, but it is beyond just simply an analysis of which facility would be appropriate. It would actually be the design work for the data center, which would be beyond just simply saying, please put it in this building, please put it in this building.
See, Jennifer, even so, even the design of a building, if we're talking 3,500, 4,000 square feet, 500,000 is an extremely large amount. You could build a building for 500,000. So why, I don't, I don't understand this. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Right, and part of hiring Rossen Berzini, because they are experts in, in the data center world, is to help us do some of that sense-making. Specialized buildings, hospitals cost more per square foot than a typical building that you would build for office or retail. Same way with a specialized technical center, such as a, a telephone switching center, would cost more per square feet for hardening and things of that nature.
Madam Chairman, I suggest you table this.
I was going to ask if there was, this was time sensitive. It did come to us late after the agenda was out on Friday. Not all of us have read it, and if Chuck Ross was eminent or part of the-
Yes, ma'am.
Putting this together, and he's not here, could we, is there a motion to table this item?
Motion unless, motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second? And we'll bring this up next time. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is bills for final passage. Following that is tabled bills. Now, I understand that one of our council members has to leave early this evening, so I'm wondering if there could be a motion to adjust the agenda to bring tabled bills forward at this time?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to bring the tabled bills forward prior and put them in front of the bills for final passage.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, are there any tabled bills to be removed this evening?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove tabled bill 3865 as introduced.
Okay. Bill number 3865, there's a motion to remove her from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, I need some clarification from Ms. Lykem on if the bill we're looking, the original bill or if it's the amended bill.
Madam Chair, at the original meeting, and I was not, but in reviewing the minutes and attempting to review the, the streaming today with Mr. Ellis, there was a verbal amendment to the bill that was not a line change. There was simply a, a motion by Mr. Brazel to remove a certain address. The problem is, is there's nothing in the bill establishing addresses, so it, it, in effect, doesn't have an effect. So as I believe the council is aware, Mr. Ellis attempted to put together some language affecting what he thought Mr. Brazel was trying to do. That was circulated before the last meeting. In addition to that, there is a, also a, a bill that's in your files that one of your councilmen asked for as a potential substitute.
Okay.
So right now, we have a bill that was your original bill that was amended by removing that address. That, there are, within it, so it, in an essence, doesn't really affect.
So for, for clarification, what we're looking at is bill number 3865 as it was originally presented by staff?
As it was presented by staff with a motion that was made to remove, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the address off the top of my head, Councilman Brazel, but just simply to remove that address, but there are no addressed properties within the bill.
Okay. Is there a motion to amend the bill to remove the removal of the address? Or in other words, to go back to the original bill, which would include all property owners?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we return to the original 3865, which includes all party parcels.
With no exception for any addresses.
No exemptions.
Second.
There's a motion, all in, all in favor of going to the original bill with no exceptions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
All opposed.
Okay. We, you're opposed also? Okay. So we're-
And I think Councilman Winn may have just voted.
Can he vote?
He's allowed to vote.
Absolutely, it wasn't a roll call, so he absolutely can vote.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
Do you vote? And I vote no.
Okay, so we have four yes and three no. So it's, that passes. So we're looking at bill number 3865 as originally presented. Do we have any comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Brazel.
This, this whole bill has been messed up, and, and we went over it and over it, and I can understand the council trying to move it forward because I know there's been a lot of emails going back and forth, and I know that, I, I do think the subdivision should have the NID, and I agree with them. I don't think it should be held up for certain particular minor issues, whether or not they're minor or not, but I won't support it. And the reason I won't support it is because Mr. Moore, we instructed him that we would hold off on this bill till he got back. I'm not sure which way I would go on it because some new information has come about, but I, I'm not going to support it for that reason because he's not here. We told him we would wait to have the discussion, but that's why I'm not going to support it. Okay? At this point.
To clarify, I'm not sure who told him we would wait.
I said that, but that's, that's just, that's not up to you guys. That's, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a question of Mr. Feldman I'd like to put in the record. Mr. Feldman, in the earlier meetings, I was under the impression that Mr. Moore just had a 50-foot easement from his property to Elarman Oaks Drive. And the emails that came through from various residents of that, of that area said that Mr., Mr. Moore actually has a 600-foot of road frontage on Elarman Oaks Drive. Is that the way you interpret the map, sir?
I won't specifically say it's 600 feet, but it is closer to 600 feet than it is 50.
50 feet.
I believe it was about 593 feet.
Okay. So a large portion of his property is boarding that road and will benefit that, not just a simple little 50-foot easement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do have the map up here. I'll try to point it out. Here is Mr. Moore's entire property. Here is the proposed road as it exists, and you can see that his property goes from this point down to the highway, and that is approximately 600 feet, give or take.
Okay. And, and you know, also just, I did call Mr. Moore today when I found that out and left a message for him and never heard back, and I do feel bad that he can't be here this evening, but with the same token, I understand that you all want to move this forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I, originally, I supported the exemption from Mr. Moore's property, and, and in between now and then, we've given him several opportunities, there were several opportunities to kind of, you know, make us and him happy, and he didn't take either one of those. So I really think it's, it's probably best for us not to make exceptions because I think in the future, every time we have a, a NID come before us, people are going to be asking for exceptions. So I, I support the, the bill as, as it is with, with no exceptions.
Okay. Mr. Dougherty, do you have any comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. Like I've said from the beginning, I think we're setting a bad precedent if we let one person out here, and I think, I, I've made several trips out there, met with the people Saturday before last. I think we owe it to them, the vote on it one way or the other, so they know where they stand, whether to start over with a project or it's going to be on the ballot in November.
Mr. White, do you have any comments? Mr. White, do you have any comments?
Um, I also wish that Mr. Moore were here. However, we have heard from him at least three, and I think perhaps four different meetings. Um, my position on this hasn't changed. I believe all property owners that, um, use Ellerman Oaks should be part of the NID. So, um, that being said, if there are no other comments or questions, would you read the title and call the roll, please?
Bill number thirty-eight sixty-five, an ordinance placing the creation of the Ellerman Oaks Road Neighborhood Improvement District on the November sixth, two thousand and twelve ballot. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
No.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Bill passes. Are there any other bills to be removed from the table at this time? Next on the agenda is bills for final passage. First bill on the agenda, bill number thirty-eight sixty-nine.
Bill number thirty-eight sixty-nine, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to RR, single-family residential district as per application one-five-one-zero-nine.
Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Brazel, this is in your district. Do you have any comments? Okay. Hearing none, would you read the title and call the roll, please?
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to RR, single-family residential district as per application one-five-one-zero-nine. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill thirty-eight sixty-nine passes. Bill thirty-eight seventy.
Bill number thirty-eight seventy, an ordinance authorizing execution of annual funding approval agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for receipt of six hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and six hundred twenty-seven thousand, ninety-five dollars to fund reimbursements for costs of programs operated by St. Charles County, beginning January first, two thousand and eleven, and January first, two thousand and twelve, respectively, under the St. Charles County Urban County Consolidated Plan two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question of Mr. Anthony. What is this money going to cost us?
Uh, this actually doesn't cost us anything. This is, uh, uh, grants that we get because we have, uh, formed an urban county, and it's an entitlement amount that is based upon, one of the main factors is population and degree of poverty and, and so forth. And so, um, uh, there is an allocation, uh, budgeted by Congress every year, and we end up getting calculated how much we're going to receive. Uh, we don't have any additional monies that we have to, uh, spend as, as a share. Um, it's about the only thing that maybe we're not compensated for while, while the, while the funding allows us to reimburse ourselves for staff time. It usually takes more staff time than what they allow the funding.
Okay.
But other than that, uh, there, there isn't a cost.
But we, we make no obligations, we suffer no promises by taking this money?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
If we don't use it, we give it back.
All right. Thank you very much. Would you read the title and call the roll, please?
An ordinance authorizing execution of annual funding approval agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for receipt of six hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and six hundred twenty-seven thousand, ninety-five dollars to fund reimbursements for costs of programs operated by St. Charles County, beginning January first, two thousand and eleven, and January first, two thousand and twelve, respectively, under the St. Charles County Urban Consol- Urban County Consolidated Plan, two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen. Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill thirty-eight seventy passes. Moving on to bill thirty-eight seventy-one.
Bill number thirty-eight seventy-one, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental transfer agreement between the county and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for an exchange of properties related to the Route three sixty-four extension. Said properties being a tract located near the youth activity park on Highway N and a highway maintenance shed site located on South Highway ninety-four.
Are there any comments or questions? Would you read the title and call the roll, please?
An ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental transfer agreement between the county and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for an exchange of properties related to the Route three sixty-four extension. Said properties being a tract located near the youth activity park on Highway N and a highway maintenance shed site located on South Highway ninety-four. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Dougherty?
Yeah.
Bill passes. Bill number thirty-eight seventy-two.
Bill number thirty-eight seventy-two, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for participation by the St. Charles County Department of Health and the Environment Medical Reserve Corps in the Show Me Response Program.
Any comments or questions? Would you read the title and call the roll, please?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for participation by the St. Charles County Department of Health and the Environment Medical Reserve Corps in the Show Me Response Program. Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill passes. Bill thirty-eight seventy-three.
Bill number thirty-eight seventy-three, an ordinance amending chapter two thirty-five and enacting new chapters two thirty-six and two thirty-nine ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, relating to programs of the Department of Community Health and the Environment, and authorizing fees for services offered through those programs.
Are there any questions or comments? Would you read the title and call the roll, please?
An ordinance amending chapter two thirty-five and enacting new chapters two thirty-six and two thirty-nine ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, relating to programs of the Department of Community Health and the Environment, and authorizing fees for services offered through those programs. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Bill passes. Bill thirty-eight seventy-four.
Bill number thirty-eight seventy-four, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the Core Public Health Functions Contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for services to residents of St. Charles County and receipt of funds up to the amount of one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars across fiscal years two thousand and twelve through two thousand and fifteen.
Any questions or comments? Makes it a lot easier after you give a presentation and then have three bills for final passage. Would you, would you read the title and call the roll, please?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the Core Public Health Functions Contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for services to residents of St. Charles County and receipt of funds up to the amount of one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars across fiscal years two thousand and twelve through two thousand and fifteen. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill passes. Bill thirty-eight seventy-five.
Bill number thirty-eight seventy-five, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Peters for collection of water service line repair fee.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Cronin, you had a question last time. Did you get your question answered to your satisfaction?
Uh, yes, I guess I did. My only question was really why we're collecting this for those folks, but then I think one of the emails that came through said because if we didn't collect it, it would cost them a whole lot more money to have it done through the water provider. So that's, that's sufficient for me.
Okay. Any other questions? Would you read the title and call the roll, please?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Peters for collection of water service line repair fee. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill passes. That concludes our bills for final passage. Next on the agenda, miscellaneous announcements? Yes?
Could I humbly request that you, uh, one of you consider making a motion to go back, uh, to the consent agenda and, and remove that bill from the table regarding the, uh, the, uh, the engineering contract? I apologize to you. Mr. Gross knows everything there is to know about this. Uh, we were not prepared to answer your questions. I think we are now. I was equally concerned about the thought of spending half a million dollars on a, on engineering. It's my understanding that's only part of the services we would get for this, but if you would bring it up again, we, we'd make every effort to try to answer your questions, and it's my understanding there is some time sensitivity here.
Is there a motion to untable?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I started answering your questions under presumption that, you know, this had actually been looked at completely already, but I'll, I'll turn your attention to exhibit C and kind of walk through this contract very quickly. Um, exhibit C, we'll see the task one for the data center, uh, design, um, piece of it, and you'll see the total for the data center design is two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, um, which is far away from the, the actual overall contract. And over in the first column, you'll see the construction management of even that piece of it, seventy-four thousand dollars. So the actual design pieces of this is very small in comparison to what was originally thought. Um, doing just some math in my head, we're looking at about, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars now for those design services, and a lot of that is verifying the location, uh, looking at what our needs are in terms of the size of a data center, uh, as far as the resiliency and survivability, and actually putting all that information together for us to go out there and bid on. Uh, another piece of this is a task two for the sheriffs, the six-point-seven-five acres behind the sheriffs. Uh, that master plan out there is a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. Now, part of what's hooked into that for the radio contract, the time sensitivity, sensitivity piece of this, actually for both of these, but more importantly for the sheriff's department area, is helping us make the best use of that land to put it in one of the tower sites for the, the radio project. Uh, if I was to go out there and willy-nilly say, well, here's the tower it's going to be, that could disrupt the use of our land, uh, as, as you might see it from a strategic vision perspective. So that's the second task that we've asked this firm to do is master site planning, uh, to make the best use of that property that we already do have. And some of the options were removed, but the last option, uh, that makes up, makes up the rest of this contract for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars is development of site-specific radio sites. This is an option that may or may not be executed as part of this contract because we are on definitive timelines set by the FCC, um, with our vendor on this radio project also developing tower sites in two other counties in this region. This was to assist if needed to meet our deadlines, the mandates given to us by the federal government, the FCC here. Uh, so we've been assured by our prime contractor on the radio project that we won't need this, but we wanted that just in case to meet those mandates. So exhibit C will help a lot in terms of how we're spending this money in this contract to get us further down the road in the radio contract, as well as making sure, uh, we're looking out not only for the, the money you're appropriating, but also for the vision of the county and the best use of the property that we do have. Does that help clarify a little bit?
Mr. Brazel?
How was this bid out? How were they picked, this, this firm?
We originally put a RFP out, uh, I believe it was March of last year. Is that when it was? Okay. The RFQ, that's right, I'm sorry. The RFQ, uh, we, we put that out March of last year. Uh, I can't remember how many we had responded, but we had a committee of about six individuals that went through that vetting process. We selected a shortlist of three, which we then went to a second interview stage, scored accordingly, and then we entered the negotiations phase, uh, with this vendor, which has been ongoing now for about nine months.
So the, um, you, when you guys bid this out, you're going to have a general contractor building the building, right?
Correct.
So you have, you're having a, you're having a design fee. It still sounds, two hundred and eighty thousand's design fee still sounds high, it's typically seven percent, but doesn't it, on a typical architectural fee, that, don't they also do the, um, construction meetings and all that other stuff? They do all that coordination as well, so why, there's another seventy-four thousand dollars added to it? Uh, the general contractor's responsible for organizing the construction job, and then I, I can understand an architect just checks on the technical spec- specifications and things like that. It seems high to me. Does it, does this include, does the consulting include anything other than, I, I know that some of the other things you went over, but does it have to do with the towers themselves, the different locations?
Uh, and, and the last one, in, in the data center, we are, uh, requiring, we are needing a tower there because the, uh, what we call the master site, or if you will, the brains of this radio system need to be housed somewhere, uh, that is very resilient. And this is, uh, this contract, this location, we, and we need to have that built out. Uh, that require, requires a tower component as well, so that's part of this, uh, overseeing that construction and working with those engineers as well to, to put that in here. Uh, and again, the, as you said, the construction management piece of this is, is seventy-four thousand dollars. That, that's not design work. That's just to help us make sure that the building is built to the specifications the county needs and oversee, uh, that, once that RFP goes out there for, for bid, uh, and to help us award that bid as well, so.
Mr. Cronin?
I think part of the problem is the exhibits that, that we were, were look, that you're referring to, we just got tonight, and the one exhibit is sideways and you can barely read it on here, okay? But the same token is, I understand a lot of this money's going for a master plan, but to me, rather than spend all that money to figure out where to put that tower on six-point acre site, there's a bean field for sale next to that sheriff's department. You could probably buy a chunk of that bean field and put it on. And the other thing is, as far as a lot of this, the project, the two-hundred-some-thousand dollars that was spent on the election authority building, that could be bought, that could be used by the bean field to build a bunker-style building behind that election authority building instead of taking an old building and putting a new structure inside of it because it's, it's got a leaky roof, you got to do something. And I apologize, I, I understand this is time sensitive. I will vote for it in, in, under courtesy to Mr. Gross because I think he does a good job trying to prevent this stuff, but I sure wish that I could have saw this earlier and had some questions on it. Is there any possibility that we could, is the, is the data center and the radio tower both time-sensitive, or can you split this up and, and do it separately if one's time-sensitive and the other one's not?
Actually, they are both time-sensitive because to do the, uh, network engineering and so forth with the radio project, they need to know where we're putting the ner- the brains of this, as well as the towers to connect it in with the whole, uh, because we have to go to the FCC for, uh, environmental approvals, for historic approvals. That's a very long process to get through to make sure we can even put a tower in the location.
What happens if this, we spend this money, and as reports come back, and that Turner Boulevard building won't take the wind shear or the seismic forces? Then you're back to square one, are you not?
Councilman, if I might ask a question that I think might help this a little bit? Your 250, I think, is that what the line was?
280.
280?
280.
Is that simply, that's not simply a determination of being able to say that the Turner Boulevard location is going to work for a data center? That's the actual design of the data center.
Of a data center.
So, regardless if you go out and you built a bunker on neighboring property, you still have to design a data center. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What goes into that portion of the work?
Of the design work?
Yes.
Part of it would be looking at safety factors and the environment, our needs, as I discussed before, from a power redundancy, what they call multiple tier levels in a data center for survivability, so that if anything happens, the public safety communications network does not go down, especially if an officer's on a call. But again, I mean, I would even take away from that $280,000, $74,000 to help oversee the construction aspect of that, so we're still looking at around $210,000 for that design work, no matter where we put a building.
Right. So, some of that design work, for instance, on the electrical and the emergency backup system, stuff like that, that could be used on a different building should you have to do that?
Absolutely.
Are they also going to consider the cost of losing that much space versus a new structure? Because you have a certain amount of inherent costs there because you're giving up part of an existing county building versus building a new one.
Sure, absolutely. And what I failed to mention as part of this Task 1 phase is Ross and Barazini are, actually, they have expertise in storage and handling of materials. So, what is part of this contract is to look at how the elections does their business, as well as what they store and how they store it, how often they use it, and come through and make a decision. If you think of, like Costco and how they have all that automated storage for the best use of their storage facilities, that is also part of this first task.
Instead of spending all that money for mezzanines for that Turner Boulevard building because the election authority doesn't have the room, we built a separate building, you wouldn't have to put all that mezzanine work in. So, you see what I'm saying? I mean, that's where I have an issue with it, and I'll vote for it because you guys are telling me that you've done due diligence and you need it. But to me, I mean, I can tell you in the private sector, from my experience, and I've built three commercial buildings, this isn't how I would approach it, okay? So, okay?
I have a question. First of all, are there any other questions from the council? I have a question. What is the source of funds for this contract?
The source of funds will be, is from the radio communications tax.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I will tell you that several people, not me, have spent a lot of time on this, and, you know, it's very, very technical. I think Mr. Brazel's absolutely right when he talks about the typical building. It's all I know about this for sure, is that this is not typical, that this is very high-tech, it's very unique. And, but I think, I applaud you for asking the right questions because the numbers on a typical building would be way out of line.
Madam Chair, if I may add, County Executive is exactly right. Our vendor has a standard called their R-56 standard that we must adhere to, which is a cost driver on some of this effort, to make sure that we meet their standards, because part of our contract with those is a maintenance piece, and to honor that maintenance contract, we have to meet some of their standards when they put in the equipment. So, that's part of the driver on this as well, to make sure that it is done properly to their standards.
Madam Chair, I got one question.
Yes.
How close are we getting as far as the tightness of completion on the mandate deadline? I mean, one little bitty delay and we could be in trouble, right?
Absolutely. We actually just went through an exercise looking a year into the future, and where can we compress the schedule to make up time for the schedule slippages that we've had today?
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, would you call for the vote, please?
And this is a consent agenda item?
It is.
Okay. But this is to approve the IAS Department Engineering Services contract for Public Safety Communications and Disaster Recovery Data Center.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill passes. Next on the agenda is miscellaneous announcements. Does anyone have any announcements to make this evening? Yes, sir.
Two announcements. First of all, I direct your view here to the new paintings on the wall. I hope everybody agrees with me that they're an improvement to the room. They're Bingham prints, which we got from the State Historical Society of Missouri. Think they're appropriate for this type of public meeting room. And then the other thing, of course, I want to prop ours on the ballot next Tuesday. Prop R, of course, is the continuation of the 1/2 cent transportation sales tax, which was originally passed in 1985. It was reapproved. As a 10-year son said, it was reapproved in '95, and then again in '05, and this, we're asking the voters to approve it again for another 10 years. Obviously, it's something I will be supporting, and we just want to encourage everybody to go vote, whether you're for it or against it, next Tuesday, primary election.
And I believe the county council had a resolution at a previous meeting where we 100% endorsed the proposition R also, and do hope that people vote for it.
We've been going around making presentations, and the response has been overwhelmingly in favor, but we still need everybody to please talk to your friends and neighbors if you're for this and encourage them to go, to go vote for it.
Okay. Thank you. Our next meeting will be on, what is the date of the next meeting? August?
It should be August 9.
The 13th? And my question to all of you is about a work session prior to the meeting and what topics you might want to discuss. We have a request to discuss radio towers. Is that right? Radio towers and locations for a discussion item. I believe we've talked about the compression issue being presented at the next meeting. Is there anything else anyone would like to talk about or put on the agenda?
I don't understand what you're talking about, the tower locations?
Mr. Brazel brought up the tower locations. I had brought up just changes to telecom, the UDO, current rules for telecoms.
Okay. You're talking about the UDO and?
Yes.
Okay.
Planning and zoning just had one, it's a little controversial, in Wentzville, it's 1,200-foot apart.
I didn't know if you were referring that or to the tower project we were just talking about.
I think Joe had some questions about meeting with the cell companies and talking about, we're going to have space available on those towers, and we sure like to talk to them.
Just a general discussion about towers. I believe it's time for the council to turn in their goals for the next year for the budget. We can put that on the agenda if you all would like to be thinking about what goals or objectives you'd like to accomplish in the next year. And if there's anything else, let me know, but probably we'll have a 5 o'clock work session prior to the August 13 meeting.
I have one other item, if it's possible, if there's time.
Okay.
I've been working on the dollar roundup on the property tax bills that go to the charities that assisted by the Community Assistance Board, and I think I may have enough information if we have time to put that on the work session agenda at that time. It's your decision.
No, that would be fine. I do serve on the Quiver River Dollar Roundup, and so I would like to talk to you beforehand, but it would be fine to put that on the agenda. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
See you next time.